Why you are sorting out whatever is outstanding there? I would like to call our meeting to order. Good morning, honourable members, and the media, and any other public members that are present here. Good morning, Mr Ampanda and your team. You are most welcome. This is our normal meeting of the Committee on Natural Resources that we normally attend to every Tuesday from nine o'clock up to eleven o'clock. Meaning that our meeting today will also end at eleven o'clock because we have another committee which is starting at eleven o'clock and most of the members here, they are also part of that committee. So I wish we can really fast track our process this morning. My name is Ignace Mingana Kupula. I'm the deputy chairperson of this committee on natural resources. And together with me, I'm accompanied by members of this committee, members of parliament, plus the staff members. I wish to, from the onset, like to introduce ourselves from this side and also give the floor to AR to introduce themselves.
That we know to whom we are interacting with. So I wish our discussions are going to be fruitful and we find the way forward at the end of our discussions. May I start from my left hand side?
Good morning, everybody. My name is Maria Elaro, a member of this committee.
Thank you, honourable deputy chairperson. Good morning, everybody. My name is Ebanze Nkarupu. I'm also a member of this committee. Thank you.
Morning, everyone. My name is Natangwe Ichete, equally a member of this committee.
Good morning, everybody. I am Diderek Frish, member of this committee. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Janfen Weg, member of the committee. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maika Vekotora.
Good morning and welcome to the visitors, Dangeni, Kakweno and Yambu, member of the committee.
Good morning. My name is Kodat Kandume, member of this committee.
Good morning. My name is Maria Kamtali, member of this committee.
Good morning. My name is Kanzim Johanna, member of this committee. Thank you.
Good morning, honourables and our visitors. My name is Selaria Mukapule and I'm equally a member of this committee.
Good morning. My name is Lucia Wadpoi, a member of this committee.
The staff members, can you please also introduce yourself?
Good morning. My name is Namasi Kulu, Lizazi, secretary at the committee.
Good morning, Belinda Deorela, staff of the National Assembly.
Good morning, Analisa Meroro, also staff of the National Assembly.
You are done? The other ones, they are just observers, ne? Good, thank you. Honourable Ampanda, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, your worship, for the opportunity. My name is Jobam Ampanda. I'm an activist of the AR movement.
Yes, good morning, everyone. My name is Maichitwavi Cavetu. I'm the AR head of legal. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Dimbulukeni Naoyama, an activist of the affirmative repositioning movement.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Benedict Law. I'm the land indigenization member of the affirmative repositioning movement. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Ella Maganomara, AR administrator.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Atobia Senyamba, an activist of AR.
Good morning. My name is Russell Squerry.
Good morning.
Are we done? We are done? Oh, thank you very much. Now we know who is sitting around this table. I would like to first and foremost, let me give a brief background to the petition. The petition calling for the regulation of land ownership by foreigners was submitted by AR on the eighteenth of March, 2019. The petition calls for the urgent passing of legislation to provide for the regulations of foreign ownership of land to fulfill the directives and objectives of Article sixteen one of the Constitution to regulate the right to acquire property by persons who are not Namibian citizens to reaffirm and give power, control and ownership of the land in Namibia to the people of Namibia and to provide for incidental matters. Procedurally, the Parliamentary Standing Committee on Constitutional and Legal Affairs is mandated to receive all petitions and if the committee so deemed necessary, depending on the nature of the matter recommended to standing rules to refer it to the relevant committee. In short, that is how the petition ended up with the Natural Resources Committee by referral in terms of Rule ninety-three C of the Standing Rules and Order on twelve April, twenty twenty-one. On seventeen May, twenty twenty-one, the committee invited AR to a hearing on the petition schedule for eighteen June, twenty twenty-one. Unfortunately, that meeting could not materialize because shortly after that, the country went into lockdown because of the COVID nineteen and assembly, I mean the assembly session were also suspended. The Standing Committee on Natural Resources has then the duty to consider any matter it deems relevant with regard to officers, ministries, agencies and all state-owned enterprise and para-staters responsible for the following category of affairs which shall inter alia include agriculture, water and forestry, environment and tourism, fishery and marine resources, mines and energy and land reform. It's also to monitor, inquire into and make recommendations to the assembly on matters that may directly or indirectly affect the natural resources of the Republic of Namibia and its people. Operate with a vision to promote sustainable utilization of Namibians' natural resources. Review and advise the National Assembly on the activities and matters related to the agriculture, water and forestry. Ensure that government put restraint on environmental degradation and protect the environment. Review and advise the National Assembly on matters related to mines and energy sectors. Last but not least, ensure a fair distribution of farming land and productive utilization of it in Namibia. This is the first hearing we are having, starting with the petition of AR. Subsequent meeting with other stakeholders will also follow suit in the coming weeks. And AR have submitted the petition in form of a draft bill that you would like to to be, I mean the legislature to pass. Stated in our letter of the seventeen May, twenty twenty-two, the committee would like you to give a summary of the bill with motivation for the proposal therein. Twenty twenty-two, my apologies. You are also free to share with the committee any other important or information or evidence that you deem relevant to the petition. The committee's intention is to gather all relevant information, produce a report and table it in the assembly during this calendar year. I urge you also to provide information or evidence that is accurate and verifiable as the committee will undertake to verify all claims made by all stakeholders. And these stakeholders that I'm referring to, we are talking of the Ministry of Land, the Legal Assistance Centre and the Ministry of Rural Development plus any other stakeholders. We are indeed honoured to have you here today and I hope and looking forward to constructive deliberation. And after your presentation, I'll now, after our presentation, we'll be looking forward as to what could be the outcome of your presentation. And I appeal to say that, please let us be short in our deliberation. As I've indicated earlier, that we have also another committee. Unfortunately, that most of the members here, they are also part of that committee. So that we finish within the given time. With these few remarks, I thank you and you are most welcome. And I'll now give you the floor to proceed with your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Which one?
We're just waiting for the deputy chair.
Oh, sorry. I was just, I think there is an error on the where I stated that we wrote you a letter on the seventeenth May, twenty twenty-two. I was looking forward to twenty twenty-two, that's why. I think it's just a typing error. Sorry for that.
No, thank you very much, Madam Deputy Chair. We, of course, with the passing of events, we are grateful that we are here to engage on an issue of national importance, to engage on a sentimental issue. Madam Chair, how we view the state from where we are seated, so there are three key particular important stakeholders to the state. One is the public in terms of public office and in the public servants. Two is the private sector. Private sector in the sense that it is more of a profit-driven entity but must enable the state to meet and reach its required targets. And then the civil society. Civil society that is on the street, is not profit-driven, looks at the issues to enable government and the state in particular to ensure that they meet the necessary targets of what is planned. Madam Deputy Chair, we come from the streets. We come from the clubs. We come from the churches. We represent the generation that is eager to see a reform in the way we conduct our affairs. Of course, we represent those that cannot be here. And therefore, we bring their views to the committee's attention. We do have our own personal views and we stand ready to defend those personal views that we have. But it is important for us to ensure that we bring about the views of those that are unable to be here, the boys that are on the street, the young men and women who are dejected masses of our people. Now, we intend to be very brief in our submission. We will start with an overview that will be given by Mr Shipululo, activist Shipululo Ampanda. He is going to give us a comprehensive overview of where we are coming from and why we are here. Then we'll deal with the bill with its legal nature by the head of legal activist Cavetu and we'll do a concludatory remark with our special envoy on this specific bill, Benedict Law. We, in closing, we simply want to say that we have a view that the National Assembly has been complicit in the oppressive legal and socio-economic regime that continues to suppress our people and subject them to a state of being landless, homeless and subjected to arbitrary evictions and harsh renter markets in human living conditions on the farms and the informal settlements. However, it is our hope that we sit with a general of revolutionary MPs that will take a decisive decision in ensuring that the land goes back to where it belongs to, that the land and our people are able to farm and have a basis of living. We only guaranteed our graves. Even the land that we have in the northern Namibia is not, doesn't belong to us. We are simply renting from government. But there is a class of separation in how land is treated in both spaces of the country. So, Madam Deputy Chair, we don't want to live in a shex any longer. We want to change our lifestyles. We want to improve. We want to make sure that at least we coming from coming from where we are coming from in the past and in the present, we must be able to safeguard the future for our children in making sure that we are able to reform the laws of our country and also take decisive decisions in the best interest of our people. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'm very excited to be here for quite a number of reasons. Some of you pray for us in the churches. Some of you taught us politics. Natangwe is there. Honourable Edith is there. Some of you, we are following in your footsteps. Your worship, you are there. And many other MPs who wage a collective struggle for our people. Madam Chair, Article one, subsection two of the Namibian Constitution says that "All powers shall vest in the people of Namibia." And those people of Namibia shall exercise this power through the democratic institutions of the state. So in us as the people of Namibia, including the AR movement and the young men and women who are unable to be here, in us exercising our powers, we exercising our power through you as our representatives generally. So, and the Constitution goes further in Article forty-five, to be more specific, that members of parliament shall be representatives of all people of Namibia. So in other words, the member of parliament, regardless of whatever political party, they are our representatives. What it means in healthy democracies, I can go to any member of parliament and say, please, can you look into this matter? Whether we do it in Namibia, maybe it's also our problems as citizens if we don't understand that we have a responsibility of doing that. So we are really coming here, knowing very well that you are, we can exercise and express ourselves through you as our representative. So what I intend to do is, of course, as activist Dimbulukeni have indicated, we, activist Cavetu, will go to the legal details in terms of the text that we prepared. But we just wanted to give a context of why we are saying and doing what we are saying here. Honourable Chair, we know very well that Namibia was given to Germany in eighteen eighty-four at that conference where they decided by themselves that we must belong to them. But we also know that the Germans, initially, their plan was not to come and physically establish the settler colony. They first allowed the companies to go and exploit this. So when those companies started negotiating and gaining deals with our people, they then, the German settlers who are here, the Adolf Lutherites and others, they started asking back to Germany and saying, man, we've acquired these properties in this German South West Africa, but we need protection. So the soldiers were sent to protect the gains that the settlers have made. To an extent that because of a patriarchal nature also of the Germans, they even had to send women later because the soldiers who were coming here and they settling here were mostly men. They had to send a ship at one point full of women in order for them to be able to do that. So we already see that from the beginning of this colonial project, there was a selfish motive for the settlers to acquire, for the settlers to gain, for the settlers to exploit. Now, already by nineteen oh two, the white settlers, those one that we are now describing just before the the colonial state, the white settlers had acquired about four million hectares. And I mean four million, that's an equivalent to four million, Semnioma Stadium of four million independent stadiums. Already by nineteen oh two, the concession companies, because remember the companies came first, the concession companies had already acquired twenty-nine million hectares of land and the colonial administration had acquired nineteen million hectares. That's already by nineteen oh two. Six years later, by nineteen oh eight, between, obviously between seventy to eighty percent of the Herero population had been exterminated and fifty percent of the Nama population have been exterminated. So you have now killed all those people so you can move in and acquire that land. So we're talking about nineteen oh two, they already had more than thirty million hectares of Namibian land. So by nineteen oh eight, when they've exterminated those populations, particularly in the southern part of Namibia, they went further to acquire more land again by nineteen, by nineteen oh eight. Between nineteen thirty and nineteen forty, about forty, thirty million hectares was given to, because Africanas had a problem with this, what they called the arambur. Africanas are such a proud people, they cannot understand one of their own that are poor, so they saw it as an embarrassment. So they established what is called the Carnage Commission and they wanted to really study this poor Afrikaner problem. And part of the resolution of this study, the outcome of this study is to say that, no, this, in order to solve the poverty problem, you must go to South West Africa and give the poor and uneducated Africanas land. So they got about thirty-two million hectares of land between that period. So these things that we always hear, that our people don't know how to farm and all those things, is ahistorical because land, thirty million hectares of land was given to poor and uneducated Africanas during that period with state support and state capacity already by then. Again, because remember South Africa take over in nineteen fifteen and that this period that we're talking about nineteen thirty and nineteen forty, when thirty-two million hectares of Namibian land was given to these Africanas, it was under South African colonialism. So the Second World War starts in nineteen thirty-nine until nineteen forty-five. So after the Second World War, in other words, after nineteen forty-five, the soldiers that participated in that war, it is known in our, even in vernacular when they say about Hitler's War, the soldiers, the white soldiers were given an additional seven million hectares of land as reward for them participating in that war. So you could see our history, different defining moments. Our people have been losing land systematically. By nineteen oh eight, when Zakaria Leowala discovered the first diamond in Angrapenguena, then Angrapenguena that is known as Ludris today, so the labour situation have changed because we're talking about seventy to eighty percent of the Herero and fifty percent of the Nama population in the southern Namibia was already exterminated by then. So because the colonial state did not have employees to work in the farms that had been acquired, to work in the mines that had been established, so in nineteen twenty, they established two organizations. The colonial state established two organizations. The first one is called Southern Labour Organization. And the other one is Northern Labour Organization. So the Southern Labour Organization had an office in Ondangwa. So they were recruiting the laborers to go work in southern mines and farms. The Northern Labour's organization was headquartered in Rundu. They were now getting the the workers to work in northern mines. So in other words, the aramburs, because the population had been exterminated, would work at CDM. That's why by nineteen ninety, ninety percent of the employees at CDM were from northern Namibia. Because in other words, south of Stumeb, the TCL mine and the farms that are in the north, the laborers came from NLO, from Rundu and other places. But the southern part, the farms and the mines, the employees came from that NLO in the nineteen, in the nineteen twenty. So the, because this system was working in nineteen forty, nineteen forty-two, I think, they combined NLO and SLO to create Swarla. It was very notorious in terms of exploiting of the, of our people. So I think everybody have experiences and some of you are freedom fighters, you know better than ourselves. Everyone have experience about the brutal nature of the of the contract labor system. Last year, December, for the, after close to fifty years, I drove, after fifty years, I drove one of my grandmother's brother. We discovered him after forty-two years. So in nineteen seventy-two, part of this contract labor system, he came to work at the farms. So when he came to work for the farms, we never saw him. But my grandmother always say that ingu mokongaka karama e farama mono, but at one point we thought that he's dead. We're safe, we're in the hands of God. So he, we never saw him for forty-two years. And we discovered him in twenty sixteen that he's somewhere alive in some farms there in Okahanja. He didn't have an ID and he worked for these white people for all those. And he worked for these white people for all those years. He didn't have social security, he didn't have anything, he didn't have any form of documentation. So last year, he went for the first time after 50 years home. His mother was my grandmother's, his mother was my great-grandmother's sister. And he was the only one. So he discovered after 50 years that his mother died and all those things. And his farm, the farm where he lived for 40 years, was now sold to these people. And these new owners did not want him anymore, so he had to be evicted. So now imagine a 78-year-old man who have lived in the farms for all those years as some sort of generational farmworkers. Nothing would have happened to him. Of course, we are glad as a family to have found him. But this is not my only story. I'm sure many other Namibians all over the 121 constituencies would relate to this problem that we now have. So, Madam Chair, the struggle, we know that the struggle was for the land. But we know very well that land is an incomplete project of liberation. And this is what you are telling us, as you teach us politics, as students and as youth activists, as youth leader. You tell us that the struggle is incomplete. You tell us that the struggle was about land. You tell us that we need to wage a new struggle of economic freedom. So we have dealt effectively well with free trial. You know, our people will just be taken to jail and then without bail. And you have done very well. I'm talking about you as people that we are following in those footsteps. Nobody debates about free trial anymore. We know that you are arrested after 48 hours, you must be brought before court. Otherwise, you will be released. But in the past, you can be arrested for 100 days, 200 days, two years, three years without trial. But we have not done the same as far as the land is concerned. Madam Chair, we say that Namibia, the land mass, the size of our land is 800,000 square kilometers. That's the size of our land in our country. That translates roughly to about 42 million hectares. So in other words, about 42 million football stadiums in our country. As we speak, Madam Chair, the current situation is that of these 82 million hectares, 39 million hectares is what can be referred to as freehold agricultural land and some sort of land that is lawfully owned with title deeds and things like that. And Cavetu will go in details about what actually has happened as a result of Article 16. That effectively what it means is that at independence, the drafting of our constitution, the state expropriated communal land without compensation and it became state land and protected these 39 million hectares of land. So in other words, land that belonged to the people, because in the villages, that land, Honorable Ithete, that land that we have at Domethia is not yours. It belongs to government, you are only renting from government. So what government did with the constitution, it says, it took that land from you. Before the constitution, the land belonged to you. But now it took it, the land belonged to the state without compensation and protected that, activist Cavetu will go in details of that. So this land now, the 39 million hectares, the agricultural freehold land that we are talking about, if we go in details, white people own 70% of these 39 million hectares of land. So in other words, they own 27 million hectares of this land with title deeds, this land that is with market values and all those things. White people already own 27% of that land. This is, Madam Chair, you also asked that we must be factual and we must also make reference and provide evidence. This is information that has been provided freely by the Namibia Strategic Agency and also collaborated by the Ministry of Lands. Of these 39 million hectares of freehold agricultural land, the black people only own 16%, 16% of this. Government only own 5 million hectares of this land, which is equivalent to 14%. From there, we know that there are 12,380 farms that are privately owned in our country. 7,000 of these farms are owned by the individuals. 2,800 of these farms are owned by companies. 1,200 are owned by government. 150 farms are owned by trust. An interesting, Honorable Kandume, 61 of these farms are owned by the churches. So we actually have churches in this country that own, we don't know whether it's white people that found a trick to register the farms in the name of the churches. And I would assume maybe, is it Catholic here? Or is it? Okay. So you already know.